Call this special meeting is the basis of council order Friday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty four, seven o'clock A ten. Can we get a roll call, please?
Hello, welcome to here, Henry Portman.
Here.
Jane Yelson.
Here.
Jason Hanson.
Here.
Steve Sky.
Here.
Sandy Gert.
Here.
And first item is approval of the agenda.
Who's your proof?
Second, King, Steve, we need discussion on the agenda and so. Seeing none.
That was one of my notes was on the agenda. I'm allowed to talk during this. Item three.
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Andy Kelly, KPM, I told Mayor Barker that I was an object to doing this via a special meeting, so here I am objecting. This is set to resolve itself anyway. You have a fee schedule in place you had for a couple of years in order to bond to this project. It's not preferred. It's gonna stir the citizenry up, but if we do nothing today, July one, everybody gets a high bill. That money doesn't disappear, goes towards debt service exactly how you want. So if this meeting didn't exist, we could hold these in regular council sessions, plenty of warning, get the information out, talk to people. And everybody in town will be angry for one month until you resolve it. Instead, we pay for a special council meeting, cancel it, schedule another one. You guys all get your council packets Wednesday night, six o'clock. Nothing online for us to see that they're deleting until yesterday mid morning, have a council packet. Equivalence this contentious. You probably want the open, transparent, give us the information, have input from us. This doesn't feel like that. A lot of times you hear when there's, where there's not communication or concern, you know, reach out, talk to us. I, I did, Brett, I, I called you. A lot of the information you gave me Wednesday was not correct, right? Looking back on it, I mean, you referenced a one point one multiplier or different things, but I, I think that I understand this project, project and procedure fairly well, and it's difficult for me to figure out there was a meeting this morning and get the information on it that's available with you guys. And there is infants, so right off the bat, I protest this being on a special meeting. We, we've known this is coming for a couple of years. This was a last minute put together by, by engineering, you know, you guys didn't have, thi- this is, this is a complete overhaul of the, the fee structure. It's gonna affect a lot of people. We're doing it by special meeting, we're twenty-four hours in this, with information for us to get all of difficult to get a hold of. So I object to the special meeting. We are gonna go through the special meeting. I'd also like to waive the five minute time. And if we're gonna do this at a special meeting and this many people show up, I think y'all will have a talk.
Andy? Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, which takes us to resolution number ninety in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, resolution setting time and place to a public hearing. Do you consider disclaimer of interest and right of way permit and easement?
Move to second.
Standing, Melissa. Need discussion there. Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved. We do have a closed session on the agenda, but I know a lot of folks are here to speak and I don't want people to have to leave before they're able to speak. So if council's okay with that, I was gonna open it up for public comment so that you can take that all into consideration to the rest of this moment. Okay, so I'm just gonna go and note if you wanna order how they're stacked in front of me. Sherry Place.
I'm here to represent community Becklinck and also my own personal feelings about this community, what I want this community to be. For one, how did this project get so out of control? How did we have so much overage? How was going paying attention? Do we have too many changeovers? Were we not making companies stand by their bids? This is a huge overage that us as a community have to pay one way or another, either by business or by personal. We have to pay this huge overage. The next is, I have a problem with this targeting businesses in general. Basically, we want build Nevada. We want businesses to come here, but are you gonna start a new corporation here and company here if you have a one point four multiplier on your water bill? I mean, this is what they see that when you come to build, I mean, I came here seven years ago. I looked at property taxes. I looked at all these things before I decided to build a business here. I could have gone to Ames, but I came here because it was more cost effective. If we wanna grow this community, we have to grow our businesses. Also, if we have less businesses come here, that means we become a bedroom community for Ames. I don't wanna be a bedroom community for Ames. I wanna be a place where I can have dinner, entertainment, and stay here in a small community. I don't wanna go to Ames. If I wanna go to Ames, I move to Ames. I'd open my business in Ames. My husband opened his restaurant in Ames. But he wants it here. He wants to build this community. Also, this becomes a poor tax. Not, I mean, I'm sorry, we are targeting laundromats. I am sorry, I have a washer and dryer at home. I don't need to go to a laundromat. I have all these things. I don't have to rent a fourplex because I have my own property at home. So by targeting these apartments and laundromats, we are targeting the poorest of our community. That's not right. We should be a community who cares about these people and not tax these people. Also, what would happen if a tornado paid through and took out Burt? Would they just move down the road a little bit to where they had cheaper places and we wouldn't have jobs here in town? I don't wanna see that happen. Also, I don't, by losing businesses in Nevada or people not only, we lose money. I also feel that everyone should share the brunt of this. Schools, pools, rec centers, everyone. It's all of our expense. And the thing is, yes, a school may have to raise property tax, but that hits the higher end of us. It doesn't hit the poorest of us. And no, I don't like a water rate. I don't like any of this. But we all have to share. We can't target winners and losers. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. And one thing I'll mention too on the overage, we did pull back and look at what the design estimates were and the project is coming under cost from what it was designed for. So there wasn't a construction overage.
So why is it now sixty-five million versus thirty million?
Yeah, so I, and Mike is on the line too, but from the design estimates, the, the project is lower than what it was designed to be. And we, and we've gone back through the history that I've been around from twenty eighteen, twenty twenty to pull those documents. So there might have been early discussion with some preliminary numbers and my understanding is that the thirty million came from the building itself down there on the property about ten years ago. And we're ten years later, that building and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I think was thirty-seven or thirty-eight on the wastewater treatment buildings itself on the, the grounds.
The, uh, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
And go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
We can, go ahead.
Okay. The, the, the thirty-some million is the cost of the wastewater facility on the property. The overall project was somewhere in the fifty, about fifty-eight million dollars for the whole entire thing. And the actual cost that were bid came in, were about eleven percent underneath that. And then the current cost is, is right at that, that amount. So there, there has not been an, an overage on the, the project. It's, it's actually under, under the engineering planning costs.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, moving on to our notes here, we have Charlie Good.
Well, I'm here representing Good and Wink and representing myself. You know, I can remember when my water bill was seventy-eight dollars. I'm paying almost two hundred dollars now, three years later. And I lost three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars in a few months for the Main Street project, at which I never gave a dime of that back. And, you know, I'm not only gonna pay this through the business, I gotta pay for it personally at all. And I just, it just amazes the lack of, maybe not, some communications. This sounds just like one of the costs. I mean, I was told and heard thirty to forty million dollars. We're, we're gonna be at sixty-five million. I guess I don't know where the overage or shortage is. But there sure is hell, there's a difference of opinion about the cost and how it was related to public, what we're gonna pay. There's only a few of us businesses here in town. And you keep keeping expenses on us. Just like Andy said, people ain't gonna be happy that their rates are going up. But why should I have to pay more? Because I'm in business and I take a risk every day of opening my door. And then, if you don't think I have, have to raise my prices to pass this on to everybody, I do. And it becomes a tipping point sometime or another. Where businesses will not come to town. Hey, I've got interest in somebody buying me out. Things like this make me wanna leave pretty damn fast. And you know what the biggest question was to the person that I'm talking to right now? How come your business dropped off so bad in the last three years? Could be because I've shut down so we could have a pretty mainstream. Try and get that business to come back. It's hard as hell. People are creatures of heaven. Once they learn to go a different way, it's hard for them to come back. I look at my water rates now, it'll be two hundred, two hundred fifty bucks a month. I know you guys don't care because you don't gotta pay the bill. You don't pay any employees. But it doesn't make any difference to you. We're gonna pass it on. I don't know how many of you have business that are in business, that see these expenses, that share these expenses and wonder why, rather than just sit here rubber stamp and say this is what we're gonna do, there's nothing they're gonna be up to do about it. I know we're gonna have to pay for the thing one way or another. But I have to agree with this. This would be S, have seven o'clock meeting in the morning to set fees. Just like the rec center. I asked before it was even, before you even broke ground how you were gonna pay for it. And nobody had an answer. And here we are. Same things.
If, if you, we wanted to speak?
Yes.
Okay, can you fill out one of the cards?
Yes.
Bring those up and I'll get you in the line. Andy?
I'm probably confused on this. I, I have a question first off. I know I've seen a bunch of them stand out to me. Items five and six. Neither of those are about going into a closed session, right? They're both public discussion, follow-up for a closed session. Normally, don't we have enter into a closed session, then we close, and then afterwards the discussion?
Correct.
So five and six, do either of those accommodate having a closed session today?
Yes, five does. Oh, I'm sorry, you're, I see what you're saying, that, that it should read that we're going in a closed session, sure, it's the authority. That's correct.
Okay, does that mean no closed session then today?
The intent is for the council to have a closed session.
But not published, right?
Uh, well, we can have that conversation. There is a wording issue on the, on the agenda.
Professionally speaking.
Yes.
Okay. When I talked to you a couple of days ago, you were saying maybe I'd be based on one point one multiplier, right?
Well, it was a one point something multiplier.
I, I think you said it was a one point one.
Well, I said it didn't have it in front of me. It was one point something, one point one, yes.
Okay, but it's looking like I'll probably be affected by one point two five.
Well, and I don't know too, that was one of my questions. And I don't know if you got an answer from engineering of what, if laundromats are one or where they fall, because it's based on what's discharged. So, and so, and whatever's coming out of laundry, how to wrap that up.
And I'm too worried about that one. I mean, Chama will probably raise our prices. That's, that's just life. If, if that's what you aim at, I mean, this is a matter of curiosity. Do, so do we think there's any answer today as to whether or not I'm a multiplier? Don't we already pay?
And Mike, are you able to hear that, asking about laundromats and what, and you probably don't even know?
Yeah, I heard and, and, and I can't comment on the rates because we did not do that. That was, that's Mr. Ask you, who, who did your rate thing, so.
Yeah, and we can follow up with that. So, and the reason that the tiers were proposed from the study that was done was because different people are discharging different items to the system that cost a different amount to treat. So it was an attempt, as folks are discharging things that are costly to treat, they would pay a little bit more than your homeowners that are just flushing toilets and those, those.
I get it.
So, businesses like insurance agencies and banks that have bathrooms, I mean, they're treated like residential because they're discharging residential type items.
But will New Care Up be a multiplier?
It would be the treated like all those other commercial businesses. So there's just a bathroom to be like a bank.
So no multiplier?
Okay.
The school?
I don't believe, well, they have a kitchen, so I don't know how that's treated.
They're gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, then that's picked up by the residents. We, we put, I understand the purpose of doing this. The first one went through as a meter charge. That affected everybody, made everybody mad, angry. If we, we gave away the meter charge, go to multipliers on targeted businesses, that cuts down on a, a lot of people angry with you, but the school, we all get to absorb. And that's, but they're on a multiplier. That's my cost. So I mean, there's, there's concern there. The multifamily housing, one meter was the purpose, the purpose of a multiplier on those. At just last meeting, Jason, I think you addressed a builder and hoping for more portable housing. And this is a target, the places that have fixed rents, utilities included. I think you've got some developments in the works that are gonna be fixed rent, portable housing, and you've got one out by Burt that I assume, Brian's not here, probably a single meter. Fixed rent utilities included, some I represent, some I own, but I don't quite get the idea. We're talking residential discharge, what the extra load is from three one bedrooms compared to three houses. Why, why would you tax them more?
We can look at that language.
Okay, so I'll back up my very first question about. Well, so, so that gets back to item three. We're in a special meeting with little preparation. And I asked three questions. Don't really have solid answers. We're, we're not ready for this. What are you charging me? I guess I have to pay and I'll pass the cost off. We can give lip service to how we wanna be friendly to businesses coming to town. About a year ago, we had a really spectacular involuntary annexation meeting. Where the meeting started, you have a sitting council member start the meeting by saying he couldn't find a single reason he'd wanna be annexed into the city because of the increased taxes and utilities. This doesn't make it better. And it doesn't make it better to have a special meeting. You can't answer the questions on it. This is not ready. Charge me, I'll pay it. We'll pass it on. Everybody will pay it. Not excited about the, the tiered system that is fifteen percent higher than what was told to me in three days ago.
Brandon?
Wait, Mr. Mayor to the council. Brandon Taylor, I'm plant manager for Burt Corporation. We hereby, we hereby object to the city council proceeding ordinance number ten fifty-five revise. We believe that the ordinance number ten fifty-five revise, the city's rate making process violated rate making laws of the state of Iowa. Iowa law requires transparency, non-discrimination in racing. We believe that there are violations of Iowa code section three eighty-eight point six, as well as other laws related to rate setting. City needs to eliminate its tiered system, which is arbitrary and unplanted. The city needs to work transparently with the users of the systems so that they can understand how the rates have been set. We feel that there has not been full disclosure or agreement on this process. We also believe the city should not proceed because it would be a material breach by the city of its development agreement with Burt. We ask that our action be noted in the record.
Mark Place.
So I see one of the, one of the areas you're targeting is restaurants. And trying to actually get a new restaurant off the ground is one, expensive, two, tight consuming. And when you add a traditional cost on it, like the water increase and you know, you look at it from a gallon of water, cost a gallon of water, the sake of the house or the business, takes the same profit. Carding restaurants, I'm gonna have to raise my prices. I'm gonna have to raise salaries of people working for me because I'm not gonna force them below the poverty line because the city needs more money from the business that gets passed down. So now, you know, eight dollar breakfast sandwich is probably gonna cost you, you know, nine or ten dollars because that doesn't just affect my bottom line, it affects my employees as well. So please take that into account. I think everybody should pay their, their share should be spread equally across, across the land. And if you're targeting restaurants because of extra grease, you know, being processed, well, take a look in their basement, see if they've spent forty thousand dollars on equipment to remove grease from the wastewater. If they don't have that equipment and they're getting the same treatment, well, maybe I should just have a plumber coming in with all this grease interceptor let it process the grease and pay for it now.
Smart. Shane?
I've only got a couple of things to say, and this isn't an exact number here. But, so you look at my Nevada store and we'll say I have ten customers there. My Boone store, I'll tell you, I have forty customers. And my Ames store, I have sixty to seventy customers. This will make my Nevada water bill more than my Boone store and nearly as much as my Ames store by comparison. Couple of years ago, you named me and Andy essential services, which we were allowed to stay open because we are needed. And now you're gonna go ahead and lump on a little extra money to it, which Andy's right, I'm just gonna go down and raise the price of the machines. So you, again, like you said, you're targeting the poorest is what it comes down to. And I have no idea what any of this stuff is. I haven't seen it. I'm only here because of being called. So I don't even know what you're voting on. Sounds like you kinda don't know what you're voting on. Maybe not doing this at seven in the morning. I mean, I assume you did it at seven in the morning so people wouldn't show up. They wouldn't know.
No, it's because that's when our council members are available because they all have to go to work after this. So nothing's trying to be hidden.
It seems like it. You can say it's not, but it seems like it.
No, so the process, we had an ordinance on, that passed at first reading a couple of months ago. It was pulled to give us some more time to deal with it. We've had public work sessions in this room on the, on the rates. We had an item on last Monday's agenda for the rates.
Closed session, right?
No.
It's, I thought it says.
No, there, there was, there was an, there was an item on the Monday's agenda to deal with this ordinance on last Monday, regular meeting.
But you did, you tabled it, right?
Yes, to today. So it's been going on a long time and to the point that, and council has options in front of us. One of which is to let everybody get a fifty-three dollar fee July first. That, that's possible, but the council wanted to see if there's an option to avoid putting that on our residents, which is why we're here today.
You're putting on the resident's articles. Even if you just give it to me, I'm gonna give it to the rest of the people. I don't pay this. I mean, I'll pay it at home. But I don't pay this in my business.
Because everyone in town, every homeowner has that fee coming.
Right.
And it's split up by bill, not by volume and use.
And whose fault is it? That's what I wanna know. Cause I was told originally, we were at like twenty million. Then we were thirty million. Now we're sixty-five million with no end in sight.
And as we talked about earlier.
Whose fault is it?
There, there's no fault. So the plant itself was talked about as a thirty million dollar facility a decade ago. Right? And that's what Mike Roth just talked about, came in at thirty-seven. Ten years later, with all the price changes, inflation, all that, when they actually got into the design, then you actually figure out how it has to be designed because then you get engineering and they figure out what everyone's discharging and what the oxidation ditches have to be, what capacity has to be. We have a lift station, we have a trunk line, they had to engineer all that. So the actual cost of the, of the treatment facility is in line with what they talked about. You've heard about the design bid process. The only thing that's really substantially changed from the time it was designed was the Trump sewer to get it down there. That's because Story County refused to allow us to use the right of way along S fourteen, which required us to re-engineer the project. We lost a federal grant that was in the multimillion dollar range and we had to acquire easements and do eminent domain through everybody's farm fields to get down there. So the major cost increase on this project actually came from our Story County Board of Supervisors down the street.
The other side of this is, this doesn't, this isn't a one time thing. That, I mean, that it sounds like this is gonna just keep going up and up and up. I mean, this isn't, you're just not gonna do this today. And then that's it. Everybody's gonna be happy.
Well, once we settle on rates that will cover the debt payments, then that will not change.
But what about the, what about servicing the actual loan? I mean, they're talking about, I thought you were talking about just interest right here.
No, so there, there's, there's three buckets of costs that the council has to figure out. There's operation and maintenance, which is what the plant costs to operate on an ongoing basis. And then there's the debt payments. So there's the, the two separate things that have to be figured out. So there's rates in the proposal that are based on operating costs. And then there's a flat fee for debt and then a volume base fee for debt to try to split it up so that if it's a flat fee, your little old lady in a trailer with a cat pays a huge amount for what she's not using and the, the high users don't pay as much. But at the flip side, you don't wanna put all of the costs on the high users because we've heard about that. So this is trying to, to do both and have a hybrid approach. Whether it's the right approach, I mean, there'll be more discussion from council this morning and we're hearing comments of.
But you're gonna get that fifty-three dollars from little lady with her cat when she comes in to do laundry. You're not gonna get it to her, from her bill, which makes you look better. You're gonna get it from me, who I'm gonna get it from her to give to you. That's what you're doing here.
It's all an attempt to try to spread out the debt cost appropriately.
But you can't spread it out. Everybody has to pay. That's what it comes, everybody has to pay.
If your big business is using hundreds of, hundreds of millions of gallons, should pay more on the debt than, than a person just flushing toilets.
They're already paying per gallon. What difference does it make?
And, and so you're wanting to pay per gallon, which is what you're arguing against.
No, we're already paying per gallon. We're already paying for gallon. What, why are we gonna charge Burt more per gallon? They're already paying for gallon. They're paying for the water they used already.
It's not charging anybody more per gallon.
Yeah, that's what the multipliers are.
Well, that's, so that's on operation and maintenance. And council does have an option to do tiers on operation and maintenance. I think hearing comments is probably helpful for them to make that decision. And, and you're right, I mean, they could do, they could take no action today and everyone could get that fee. And, and you're right. I mean, they could do, they could take no action today and everyone could get that fee and we could be dealing with this next month. The reason why council wanted to have meetings.
Instead of me.
What's that?
Then they can be angry at you instead of me. Cause when the little lady with the cat comes in to do her laundry and it's gonna cost her five dollars now instead of three dollars, she's gonna be mad at me. Why can't we just put it back and let her be angry at you? I didn't build this player. Right?
Nobody wanted to build a wastewater plant, me.
No. New shiny things are much more fun.
I mean, the state for, well, two things. So we can talk about the plant.
Well, just remember, just remember, you're gonna make me pay almost as much as my store that pays ten, that does seven times the business.
So the, the plant itself, and it's back from the sixties, I believe. I mean, it's, this current plan has been paid off longer than I've been alive. If there haven't been debt payments on it. They've got a point that.
When I was a kid, I'm not sixty.
What's that?
They built this down here when I was a kid. I'm not sixty.
I was told to survive sixty years old.
They built it originally.
The technical center has been there for, since I was a kid.
Originally, they built it back in the sixties. They, they've made improvements, updates to it since then.
So, but the plant itself was at the end of its life with its parts is one issue. The other issue is, we've known since before I was even on the city council. That it would not even, that the D N R will not permit the new plant under the new, night, under nutrient reduction. It can't get a state permit, the current plan. So, we, we have to build a new plant. Nobody wants to build a new plant. It's not something anyone's excited about. Um, but it is an essential service to have our waste treated and now we have to get a shakeboard.
Roads are essential.
And we do road products every year.
Have any of you driven on that avenue?
We've driven on all of them. There's, there's a lot that need work and we're trying to catch up on it, but yes.
We got a long one.
So I'm gonna move on to Ren.
I'm Ren and I'm here to represent myself at Ren's Cafe. I grew up here in town, I didn't name born already. And I say that because I love this town. My parents are Barley, you know, I'm very familiar with it. I started my business here in this town because I would, I would love to see the growth of from when I was growing up here to now. What has changed here on Main Street with the bakery, but what Abby has done with Sweet and Cigree. It is inspiring and it's a drive for me to want to continue to provide good food service for the community. I just opened Saturday. My prices were set to what I expected my utilities to come in as. I'm now expecting an increase next month. I have only been open for barely a week. And I'm now looking at having to increase the prices that my customers are now gonna have to pay. That's not just affecting my cafe, that's affecting my other businesses as well, red syrups. That's what got me to be able to open my cafe. So I'm increasing my prices on both sides of my business and that's not just gonna affect here in town. That's gonna affect. Customers being able to buy food, that's gonna be able to affect my people that have jobs here. It affects not just the businesses, it affects everybody, whether you're just impacting businesses or not. Especially if you want to continue to increase Nevada's. Community input of Ames people coming in. You have signs all over Nevada requesting more restaurants, a hotel to come in. But why would people wanna come and build those things if they're now gonna be faced with increases as a business?
That got us through our hearts here. Was there anyone else here to speak this morning? So I will turn to our attorney about the guidance on the closed session.
Um, I'm gonna recommend that discussion be an open session this morning because I, I agree. I think there's a notice issued.
So we can continue to move forward. Um, so that'll move us to ordinance number ten fifty-five A, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. The ordinance amending the vote of ordinances of the city of Nevada, Iowa, two thousand and six by many provisions for continuing to serve new charges and we will. Go ahead and begin some council discussion. Um, there are. In, I think scenarios, do we have those on here, Karen, the different scenarios?
No, I was gonna share this.
Okay, so Karen can walk us through. Um, we have what's printed on your desk that was, um. The amended ordinance, there are additional scenarios should be charged to go, or choose to go different directions. Um, you've heard, you can do nothing and everyone gets the fifty-three dollar fee on their next water bill. We can, um, adopt what's in front of you, you can adopt different versions. So. Um, there are different versions based off of upfront agreement with Burt. And what they would choose to do for an upfront debt payment versus ongoing, um, and things of that nature. She's pointed up and to set the stage there. Yeah, we can see it.
So this shows the tier system that we were talking about. And this was the latest, um. It would be the, the ones would be at the six fifty and then it shows the different tiers. This looks a little different than what the ordinance after some guidance from you or the last. We, um, just trying to come to the numbers. The top number shows in red that two point three million is what we've set a goal for revenue. And that's what this is based on, um, for O and M expenses and, uh. A ten percent reserve and some of those project costs to new projects every year and purchase, but no such things. And so this is, as you can see in the gray, that's what the different tiers would be, um. Shows you users over there and then, um. What their rate would be. And as you can see, all of those numbers currently, your rate for everyone is ten dollars per thousand gallon. So those rates should go down for everyone. It's, this is just the O and M cost. So as you explained, it's not the debt cost. What would be for that? So do you understand that? The commercial and, um. Big seven ones, ten residential would be six dollars and fifty cents. I'll say it so you guys, if I can see it very well. Um, commercial one is at seven dollars and eighty cents along with government. Um, commercial two and industrial one at eight dollars and, um, twelve and a half cents. An industrial two is eight dollars and eleven five cents. So those, that would be the per thousand gallon rate. And then, um. This is the one that we've still been kind of working through.
Can you back that up please? Thank you. Uh, he has backed up the page.
Oh, here. Can you still see it all? Now that I take it off.
Thank you.
So this is the one after your email this morning about, um. Trying to figure something out for the debt side of it. And. The first part shows the user rate again, but the far right side shows. What would be needed, um, and we still don't know, uh, Burt had originally, um. There was, they were gonna pay for their capacity. And we don't know that actual amount. So that's the struggle with this piece of it. Um, and this was just doing some. If it's, that what we think it might be or could be, and this was the figuring at twenty million. If, if Burt paid twenty million, that's the debt that, and these are yearly, um, annual debt payments. So if twenty million, then the remaining debt would be, um, about one point eight million or that. Over that, almost one point nine million. And if they paid sixty million, then it'd be, uh, one point nine five eight. So those are the numbers that we're just trying to come up with. If it's. If it's a user rate, uh, monthly across the board, that'd be the fifty-five dollars. Then this other one is going back to the tier system, which came from our consultant and his theory of. The users who are, their strength is giving more to the plant, costs more, those kinds of things. So that's, that's where that concept came from. Um, and this was just trying to. Come up with that. If this would be the mon, monthly minimum, this I column. Everybody, oh, I mean, I'm explaining it.
They'll be asked questions.
Sometimes it's, there's been a lot going. I tried so many different scenarios, um. This one shows, this K column would show the monthly minimum, what it would look like for one, one account. For a whole year. I was trying to show you what the total amount would be for them. And this, keep in mind, this is in addition to that O and M, the first one I showed you with the rates. And everybody's is down a little bit. But this is going to add to it. And you did it like, this would be the monthly base charge or. That be the tier system that I just went off of, or the fifty-five dollars if it was just everybody. Does that make sense? Any questions?
Do we have the logic behind the consultant's, uh, tier system?
Um, I don't have a tier.
We can send you his report.
Yeah, I can send you his report with the foot.
Specifically, what I would be looking for is if you do X, you're in tier one. If you do Y.
Some of that language is in the ordinance itself, um, because that's.
It's based off the strength, uh, standard strength units. So if you have four. So we'll just say, uh, commercial is not zero to six hundred and thirty standard strength units. And you're in that one rep, one factor. Above six thirty-one, one, two, five, six thirty-one to nine ninety. Be one twenty-five, greater than nine ninety is one thirty-five. And then the factor times domestic rate, six thirty-one through nine ninety or greater than one thousand thirty.
So I'd have to get educated on strength unit.
That would be, so you're, what you're, what you're technically discharging to the wastewater treatment facility. So your strength, standard strength units would be including your V O D, E T S S, T K N. Those things, the typical residential household, I believe, and Michael, if you're still on, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Is around two hundred, uh, M Gs of, uh, V O D. I don't know what the, what T S S or T K N is, but.
So how do you measure that? Do you like go to the business, put something on their backend and test it? Because depending on your grease trap system or your filtration system of the laundromat, you can have. Different levels. So someone put a very good grease trap and they may not be discharging all these things at a average one would.
Correct. So that, that is something that we are working through, getting estimates on and figuring out how we can sample some of these businesses. That way they're not put in the wrong tier. We don't want them to be paying extra. So that, that's something that we're working through our wastewater. Our supervisor as well as our consultant are figuring out pricing for sampling these businesses. For, because that is something that we do require for monitored industries. Uh, and that's something that they do on a regular basis. So we, we will be doing that as well.
So if this moves forward, they'll bring a tester out and drop it in a manhole, put it in a maiko, let it sit there for two weeks. Bless the information and then set it based on it. At city's cost.
Correct.
Is this consultant that you're talking about, is this the guy that's being sued by Kiaa, the mess you made down there?
I believe that case was dismissed. Yes, that is our.
Okay, just making sure where, I know who you're talking about. How do I know what tier I'm gonna be in?
Oh, we'd have to figure out your strength, your standard strength unit. Uh, then that, that would be by sampling, testing your, your.
So you may pass this today, but we won't know what, what tier I'm gonna actually be in until. When.
Uh, so. We would need to check. I, I can't, I don't have it in front of me, but. From what I've been hearing, you'd be in the commercial two. Which that means your total price per thousand gallons would be nine dollars and eleven cents plus the three dollars and sixty cents. So it would be twelve dollars and seventy-one cents, which is two dollars and seventy-one cents more per thousand gallons that you're paying right now. And then plus it would be the twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the debt. As well as your three dollar for the threat. So you, that, so you'd be looking at. It basically a thirty dollars and fifty cents. In, uh, increase on your bill, which would be the flat bill and then a increase of two dollars and seventy-one cents per thousand gallons. Is what yours would be.
How much water you use?
Some of that too.
We use a lot of water.
So the, they're kind of, you can just kind of pay like eight dollars for the monthly construction and that goes down to three. So there are a lot of savings in other.
You're saving about five dollars. So it's actually a twenty-two point, twenty-two dollars and five fifty cents.
You're quite a salesman. I'm saving money.
Well, your, your bills, your bill's gonna do an increase, but.
Yeah, no, I'm aware. The other thing that I thought about too is, is now they're actually basically building me my own waste treatment plant. So the only thing I will discharge is water. What are you gonna do then? How am I gonna get a tier removed?
We'll sample, which is, which is great. I mean, that, that'd be great if you were just discharging water and nothing else. That, that'd be awesome. You know, lower down to that residential area.
So then my question is that you're basically gonna double build Burt? Because they're paying some money upfront that has not been retrieved on, but then you're also gonna give them in the rears again by doing one point four multiplier on them?
They wouldn't be paying a debt.
Well, and Burt, Burt would be a, a monitored industry and so they would pay. The proposal here, I mean, nothing's passed. So our conversation with Burt has been they would pay the residential base rate for what residents discharge. Plus be charged for what they sent. So they would measure their nitrogen, their, their C O Ds, all those T K N. So it, it's C O D, T K N, T S S and phosphorus and everything. So they would get charged based on how much they're actually sending to the plant. Cause it would get measured.
But how do we get more people like Burt in if we're going to be charging them at a tier system? I mean, how do we promote more businesses like that become? For them to expand or grow?
And I think, so Burt's intent and our intent is that everyone would pay their fair share. I mean, I know council, I've heard from council very clearly, they don't, they wanna go to the public and be able to say you are not subsidizing Burt on your rates. Right? And I think Burt wants that too. They don't want anyone to feel like residents are subsidizing them. So we're trying to find what that is. Um, you know, Burt's flow to the plant is more than, is, is more flow than everyone else combined. Right? So they're sending the majority of the flow and what they're sending is also harder to treat than what the other half is. So, so ultimately they do pay a high cost because they are, are high users by far. I mean, their, their discharge alone in nitrogen is more than the population of the city of Ames. It, it's a lot.
But also their water bill is higher than anyone else's or in Nevada too.
No, it, it's correct. And I mean.
So if it's, so if a person at home puts grease down their trap. You know, and pollutes and stuff like that, you're not gonna be going to every residence and see. You know, what they're putting down in their water, what they're putting there. But to me is if you put on. Everyone pays the same amount for gallon of water, that's distributing it equally.
And we, we've had that discussion and, um, that's why the, the preference from Burt is to pay a large amount towards that upfront. So that, that would be what they would prefer.
That's where the base, the fifty-three dollars would come from. Everybody's paying the same, but everybody would get the fifty.
And you're talking about like, by buying. And you're talking about by, by volume. So one option that council has is just to break the, just to have nobody pay upfront. And have everybody pay a volume based fee. So you pay for the debt based on how much water you use. So that's one option. But then Burke, your laundromats, they end up paying more because you lose that flat fee concept too. So there's trade offs for no matter which scenario is chosen. But yeah, one option is have a flat operating cost fee plus a flat debt fee that's based on how much water you use. That's one way council could go.
I, I think the stark reality is, and Brett said it, that no one wanted to build a plant, but if we go through with the tiered system. We will not see another large business or a business that consumes a large amount of water come to the main. I'm, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, I'm just saying dollars and cents wise, business savvy. Then we'll choose another.
And Karen, do you have the other scenarios that show more of the non-tiered? All flat volume rates?
This is the O and M.
So this is one option council could look at, there are no multipliers. And in this example, Burke is still a monitored industry.
So it would be seven, the seven dollars and fifty cents, that's just for the O and M. And then the debt would be the same as I showed before, would be the fifty five dollars if it was. Per account.
And do you also have the debt fee as if you split it by, by gallons? So we had one of those, didn't we?
Um, well, that was the three sixty if it was the.
So basically it would be. So it would basically triple that, right? If nobody paid on the debt upfront, so we, we thirded it. So that three sixty would.
This is still, well, the O and M would be the same, but the debt would be. That's if um. That goes back to that other spreadsheet. The debt does. This one for fifty five dollars. That's if. You gotta remember the scenarios, that's if Burke paid the sixteen million, say. If they paid a share. That's not the whole debt. You following?
And we had a scenario as if Burke paid no debt upfront, correct?
Excuse me, I just have a question. I don't know exactly how much is Burke paying upfront?
That honestly, that's why, you know, you've heard about the delays, that's why we're delayed. We've not come to a final number with Burke, which is an important part of the process. So we've been trying to work with them. I've been on the phone all day, every day for the last couple of weeks, going back and forth, trying to get to that number, and we're just not there yet.
I have another question. Why then proper research was done prior to the county saying no to ditches? And then you had to go into the fields, how much was paid to the farmers? Got to the chase here, how many millions was paid to the farmers to get the rights?
Do we know the total?
It wasn't millions.
How much was it?
It's on the spreadsheet. Mike, do you have easements on your spreadsheet handy?
Yeah, give me a second, I can try to find that information. I don't have it right up in front of me, but I can search for it. It was somewhere in the, I, I think. Uh couple hundred thousand, if I remember correctly, Jordan. That would have been total for all the different easements that had to be purchased.
So, but how come we didn't know this beforehand? See if, if it was legal to go in the ditch?
It should have been legal, cause we, it's, it was going in the right of way. They, they told us, uh, they didn't wanna send the right of way because it caused singles.
So they told you it was okay first, and then they told you it wasn't okay afterwards?
Um, I don't know if they necessarily told us it was okay, but. Because of the state law, we thought we had the right of way to go, go down there, and they said that it's only for utilities. Which we thought we were a utility, but according to them, it was.
Hell, I think the county threw us a curve ball on that one. I don't think anybody dropped the ball, I mean, it's the project.
Somebody dropped the ball, because perhaps you wouldn't have been, you've been able to go down the ditch.
But they, they didn't allow us to go down the ditch. And I mean, I, would you have expected your elected officials down the street not to allow us to use the public ditch?
There was a communication there.
I know our previous administration, so this goes before Jordan, so the previous city administrator did talk to them about that. And that was how the plant was designed, because we were told it was allowed to happen. And then when we actually got to the permitting process, they denied it. So they did change from what our previous administrator had been told. And it's probably a staff level discussion that happened, they'd been told yes.
A project like this doing nothing right.
What's that?
For a project like this, there was nothing in right between the two organizations.
Well, that, that's when it got denied, because it, it was a permitting process to get it in right.
But then how long was, how long was the delay then? After, after you found out you couldn't go, how long was it delayed? Till when you finally got all the signatures of the farmers? Landowners.
Uh maybe six months, nine months, yeah, and that, that's what. Because of, because we had to change our plans and re-engineer things, that is why we lost out on that debt, of that, that EDA grant.
Okay, what's the interest rate on the loan right now?
Karen, is that three percent?
It's two percent on the, the ones we have on, but the last one was about three percent.
Okay, and that's a fixed rate? Okay, so, so it's my understanding that. Burke is agreeing to pay a percentage, a percentage of the total project. For their capacity that they're gonna use. Is that correct?
Yes, we, Burke will be paying for, for. Our, our discussions have always been around Burke paying their fair share for the debt, is that, is that accurate, Brandon?
Yeah, I guess I'll just keep it on the record that it is held in agreement that we signed, it was estimated at twenty three point four percent plus a pass. Was reasonable, so, and we're still.
That part of the total sixty million, then? That's what we're still committed to, okay? So, the plant is designed to handle what they're putting out, is that not correct?
Correct.
Okay, then I have a question. If they're paying a percentage for the proportion of the, for, for the use that they're doing. Then why should they have to pay an extra higher rate for the water? If they're already paying the bill? I'm just asking a simple question.
It goes back to the different buckets. I mean, you have to pay to operate the plant.
No, there's no, there's no extra bucket here. You've got a total frickin' bill.
But there are two buckets on the bill. One is what it costs us to pay our staff, and to pay for electricity, and to pay for chemicals, that's operation and maintenance. And then there's the debt fee that goes to pay the loan. So we have two different costs associated, and it's always been broken down.
But it's a total, total package fee that's going to be in existence every single month.
They're currently paying ten dollars per thousand gallons. In this ordinance, they'd be paying nine dollars and forty five cents per thousand gallons. So they would technically be paying less, because they wouldn't have the debt payments.
Are you reading that? Did you actually be paying less than what you are now?
This entire model is.
So in other words, we are here this morning, and you know what, we got a package, and I'll tell you what, I can read numbers. But. Okay. We are here this morning, and you don't even have a definite concrete plan, and you wanna force this down to our throats. Okay, so my question is, why wasn't all this in all these newsletters? Letting the citizens know, because when you send out the water bill, you send out a newsletter. Why wasn't we informed? Of these increases and the potential water increase for this, for the last two fucking years? That just was coming down the turnpike.
It's been in there, that, that there would be.
An increase of ten, twenty bucks a million.
It's been in the newsletter that.
Put in the news, but was it put in simple terms?
I think so.
One of us can understand.
I think Marla does a good job of boiling things down. I don't have her article in front of me, but she's generally really good about. About that, writing it in a non-technical manner.
People are concerned about. Non-technical matter, you can, you can be on the PSG one, but if you didn't communicate to us, and what was going to cost is gonna cost. Then you did not fulfill your civic duty of being on this council. You can laugh if you want to. But it boils down to, there was no communication with us, the citizens. And I agree with Annie, I protest this meeting. We should not be having this meeting right now. This meeting should have been held prior. Prior, yeah, it's official time, if you wanna shut down.
You, we had, we had a public work session to have this discussion just a month ago. And we had a bunch of people in this room. That was all published, Marla's just added in the newsletter, it's found Facebook. And the, the comments online have said, well, we've known there were gonna be increases. I mean, we've, we've, we've told people there would be increases. We can't tell you the amount, because every bill's different.
Then how can you tell us now that you wanna do this proposal?
Well, we're, we haven't even settled on a proposal. Council's even gotten a talk here, I don't even know where they are.
You got it in right here.
This is one option, but Karen just showed us multiple other options on that screen right there.
Okay.
So we're, so part of, so this is trying to get to a solution.
No, if you go to that back page, you're supposed to have approval of this session. In order to have, in order to have this going to affect next month. Is that not correct?
So, again, we have multiple options. If nothing is, if nothing is finalized by the nineteenth of June, everyone sees the fifty three dollar fee. That's the placeholder that was put there last year. So that's why we're having this meeting, to see if there's an option to avoid that. There may not be, but that's one option is they, another option is they collect feedback and we work on it next week. Um, so there, there, there are multiple options on the table. Um, nothing's set, and that's why we're having the meeting, and that's why we're listening to all of you.
So this fifty three dollars was planned a year ago?
It was planned at sometime at the end of twenty twenty three.
So for a year, this could have been in the newsletter that Marla's so delicately.
The intention was the fifty three dollars would not be the final figure. And we told people that that would go away, and it was not a final figure, but it had to be there because. So the loans we take out by the state, we have to have an ordinance in place that proves that it generates enough money to pay the loan. So it's a state law requirement that we have to have something in place. So since we hadn't finished all of this. Um, that's where the fifty three dollars came from, cause it divides up the debt payment across every account. So that satisfies state law.
So it kinda seems like you guys stayed out too late, and your report's due in the morning.
Well, it's been a long, it, it's been a long discussion. There was, there was an ordinance that was passed. We had a business object, council wanted more time to work on it. What's that?
Seems like you need more time.
And, and I mean, we've been working hard to come to an agreement, and we're still working hard to come to an agreement, but.
How do we build a sixty four million dollar plant and not know who's paying what? That's, that's like build the house and not. Knowing that you have to pay for it. You know, like, this should have been before we ever broke ground, like, we should know what we're paying. We should know how much they're paying, give or take, you know, five hundred percent. You know, before you break ground, why wouldn't this be talked about beforehand?
We've been trying.
So then we shouldn't have broke ground, right? Shouldn't we broke ground if we didn't know who was paying for what?
We had to break ground. That, that was, that's.
Get the numbers figured out before you break ground.
I mean, well, the state, the DNR required us to have a new plan. So we didn't have an option of postponing breaking ground. It was either break ground and build, or they were gonna find us a substantial amount to build, to not open a new plant.
So we should have been proactive, right? We, ahead of, ahead of the game on that, right?
Well, I mean, the council hired, hired a consultant to go through and review all of the, all the rates, to bring a proposal back. It was brought back. Um, we heard that it didn't work for our business, we paused, we're trying to work through that. I mean, it's all been trying to be collaborative and find that solution. So it, it's been, we have been working on this literally for years. But unfortunately, we don't have a final agreement at this point with one of our important. Which makes it a little bit more uncertain.
We've been discussing it since before I was here, so over four years.
I'm just glad I built it by my house, that was, that was my favorite part. That's awesome. So um if I smell it, you guys should have another problem. Um. Why don't we know a, a final cost? Like I said, if Burke would have designed this, or Almeco would have designed this, they would have known exactly how much it was gonna cost. It would have stayed on top of it, it would have had such a number, and it would. But because government doesn't care how much it costs, you guys just keep building and spending money.
We're not, we're not continuing to build and spend money.
How much is it done? Did the tornado cause damage? Who's paying for the tornado damage? Yeah, are you guys inspecting that?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason we don't have a final cost is because the lift station isn't, isn't fin- finished yet, cause there's.
My brother's the city wastewater team uh of Fort Wayne, Indiana, and he's an engineer. And he goes with us all the time. So, I mean, if we're gonna hire someone competent, like be a consultant, maybe we should bring someone else in, I mean. Can you push the debt back? How long will the debt get in service? Is there a limit on this? Like. I mean, he said that you can push out the debt longer or lower the payment, like, are we just throwing numbers?
I don't know what the Indiana state laws are, um but. The, the longest debt that we are able to get is a thirty year debt. And that is, and that is what one of the loans are, the other ones are twenty years. And so to answer your other question, fifty nine million, that is how much it's going to cost us.
Exactly. So they're gonna sign that, that's it. There are no change orders, and they're just gonna keep, I just feel like it's just keep steamrolling, like. See cranes swinging, and people are driving back. What I mean is, is it, when is it gonna be done officially?
Well, the, the facility itself was actually pretty close to being done. We were getting ready to sign a paper for substantial completion, but. Because the tornado damaged it, they had to do some updates. Like I said, it's the con, it's the contractor's responsibility to fix all of the damage that, out of the. The plant. What, what is being held up is the lift station that is here in town, because we continue to have problems with contractors, and we have been. Calculating the liquidated damages and making sure that they're going to be paying for all those damages that, that occurred.
They were paying for some of them, that's gonna be paying back.
What'd you say?
When is it gonna start working?
Uh, September, I believe, is when it's supposed to be open and operating. We should have all of our gear, our electrical gear, MCC boards. That should be actually here on the twenty fourth, so ten more days. That is one of the reasons that it caused a holdup, because for some reason, COVID pushed all of this back. And we weren't able to get some of the electrical gear for another year. So um it was actually supposed to be completed last June. But because of we, because we couldn't get the gear in, that was one of the reasons why it hasn't been completed. And then we continued to have issues with some of the aspects of the construction of the lift station, which we have been going after, and we. Are getting an agreement with that contractor to have a ten year warranty period, which is not typical and. And I don't know the warranty bonds when it comes to construction for local.
Yeah, one more question, folks. How much more capaci, no, how much growth can the beta have until the new plant? Cease to be efficient?
No, not a bird, no, not a, and that's because of the capacity to get the flow there is the biggest issue. So the plant has modules that can be added on easily for oxidation ditches and things like that. So it's the volume. Down. So one of the things that our staff is working on is called infill and infiltration or inflow and infiltration where they're monitoring the lines. Because we have way too much stormwater in the system. So the more stormwater we take out of the system, it buys us more capacity for the plant. So that's a big, a big portion of going forward. Um, and it's part of the the budget here, is how you can prevent stormwater from getting into our treatment lines to then be part of the flow. Because if we can prevent that, then our lift station or trunk line have more capacity. So those are the limiting factors for future growth.
Okay, so. But in simple terms, if we had another two hundred houses in town. This plant will take care of.
Yes.
Okay, three hundred houses?
Uh, I believe so, yeah.
And I saw Andy, did you have a comment?
No, it's fine.
Um, one thing I'll, I'll mention to council too, it would require additional conversation and. Uh, probably another meeting next week to finalize. Um, but in our conversations with Burke yesterday goes brought up, is there a mechanism where they can offset that increase cheaper a month to buy more time to talk? So um, my response to Chad is that we'd have to look through how we could operationalize and legally accomplish that. But if that's something you would like further discussion on, that tends to be a a consensus step that. We finalize discussion around that and bring you something next week.
So that's. I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
More time we need to release the workshop that we didn't have to.
I feel like the general, one of the common themes in the comments says, was that the public needs more time to digest this and. Maybe some feel like they had, had, had communication about it, so I don't, I don't think, I mean, they're still willing to do that. Like from that conversation, not a month, so that the public can feel like they're gonna, they need. So what what Dane said, I wondered about for a while, but this one kinda made it imminent. Why do we not have access to the council pack, same type of council bills? Why, why do I chat all through Friday to? Look for my Christmas present?
I know it gets emailed out to the distribution unless at the same, same time as we get it off of.
Well, I, I don't necessarily need an email to them, maybe Burke would appreciate knowing, like, having, you know, for them, but I assume that it's. That's almost as instantaneous stuff to post at the city website. And it's one of the points that Dane ran a long time ago was. How much more will be utilized in social media? I know it comes out on Thursday night. Without digging for it or without requesting it, uh, or or without being on the email list, it's not available to the public for. For twelve, twenty-four more hours. Is, I mean, is there a reason? The the only one I could think of was so the council has a quick chance to be able to answer questions now. And that's, that's not a good reason to to withhold public information to the public that's looking for it.
Yeah, well, I'll answer that and we'll get back to council. So. Our our city clerks send out the packet, normally they're working on it sometimes late on Thursday, and then our communications person comes in Friday. And when she gets here, she puts it up on Facebook and all that. So it's just different staff members doing it.
Well, I.
But we can take that back and see if there's another way to do it.
This one was, and we. There, unless we're on an email list, there was. I don't know, eighteen hours between to be able to find the information and not. And again, that took me actively pursuing it, uh, and and following this for years. Uh, but the the communication could be better.
Okay, council, back to the. Your comments, direction, and feedback.
Is there, I think we're all, we're trying to have more time to sort through this. There's a lot of open ended questions that we need to answer. Um, is there a risk that we cannot? Uh, accomplish this extension and then the original rates go into effect? Or are we pretty confident that we could? Negotiate something with Burke to buy us some time to work through this?
I mean, one of the words in their mouth, I think, from our standpoint, I, I feel like we could accomplish an agreement to buy more time. The part of the issue is gonna be how to operationalize that. I know that might be challenging. Um, and then there's a potential communication issue because they may see a fee and see a credit. And so then you're gonna have everybody confused about what the heck's going on. So it goes back to making sure there's good information out there about that. Um, my understanding from Karen is that that moves forward, everyone's bill would have to see the fee. But then they'd also have to individually go in and credit every account for that fee. Rather than just not turn on the fee to begin with. So I think it comes back to. Um, and that's maybe some questions that they can talk about with the folks at S R F. Um, you know, if we have a payment coming from elsewhere, can they not turn on the fee for a month? And it is our own ordinance. So it's not really. A state ordinance and that, so. That there would have to be a digital conversation around the operational inside of the.
I think the answer is there, as always, there is that risk. Yeah, of course, there's that risk. Uh, I'm not imparting to those conversations, but. Um, I do understand that there's been a willingness to, to fund that first month. Um, and if if that still stands. We can work on it.
Everybody would like more time to process this and figure out the scenario. So I, I think if we can have some reasonable, not confidence that we can get there. To buy us some time, that's, that's the way I'd like to go.
I think we'll need to be very clear about timelines so we don't. Get in the situation again, because um, I mean, we've been pretty clear about this deadline. And it still wasn't good enough. So I mean, I, I wanna make sure we're very, very clear about that.
We will make, I was. That's what's happening.
Thank you. And I mean, just beyond, some of it's really challenging because, I mean, you've got a bunch of engineers and a bunch of attorneys and a bunch of cooks. And so, you know, we, we can talk proposals and then it takes sometimes days to get eyes on all that. So it moves a lot slower than we would like. Is that kind of everybody's direction? So then I don't think we need action. We just need to then have. My understanding is we'd have to have a special meeting before the nineteenth to accept whatever document is drafted. Everybody clear?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on this morning's agenda? I'm sure it's just the final.
Yep.
Adjournment.
Yep.
Dane?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. And I do wanna thank everyone for coming. It's meaningful to hear all the feedback.
Thank you, folks.